In order, roll call please. Ms. Angela is none texting.
Anderson.
Yes.
Conrad.
Rosa.
Feltus.
Yes.
Mezek.
Yes.
Sensala.
Sure.
Bullson.
We have a call. All right.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Verification of posting.
The agenda was posted at City Hall, State Bank of Arcadia, Arcadia TV and appliance on the city website on August 18 by four thirty P. M.
All right, we have another twelve item agenda and a motion to approve.
So move.
Second. Feltus, second, Sensala. Questions? Clerk will call the roll.
Mezek.
Yes.
Sensala.
Yeah.
Anderson.
Yes.
Conrad.
Yes.
Feltus.
Yep. Motion carries, public comment. Public comment.
None at this time.
Public comment.
None at this time.
Speak now or forever hold your peace, Carl. I'm just kidding.
We're here.
You're here for the-
When, when, when the time comes.
Okay.
If you people have a question, Juan and I are here to help.
We're pretty open about our meeting and this, wherever discussion is met from the public, if they're here as part of the, a different agenda item, we let them talk at that time.
Well, as, as I said, if, if you've got questions, we do have a couple of questions, but other than that, that's, that's it at this point.
So-
Thank you.
Presentations none this evening, all business, approval meeting minutes from the nineteenth.
So move.
Motion by Feltus, second by Mezek.
Hold on.
Changes? Clerk will call the roll.
Sensala.
Yeah.
Anderson.
Yes.
Conrad.
Yes.
Feltus.
Yeah.
Mezek.
Yes.
Monthly safety update is in your packet with questions. Reach out to Angelo, maybe Tim Woods kind of in his group put it together, he might have more answers, bud.
Yeah, it's, it's our safety program, it hits the general fund as well, so.
Liquor license hearing. This time I would open the, the public hearing for the liquor license, does anybody want to speak in regards to liquor license hearing? Hearing none, we'll move on, I'll just keep it open if anybody from the public comes in and then we'll prove it a little later on at the meeting. Item A, discussion of possible approval of the Chamber of Commerce special event on September thirteenth at the visitors.
So move.
Motion by Conrad, is there a second?
Second.
By Sensala. Barb, do you want to just give a little brief in regards to what it is?
Yeah.
Introduce yourself, so anybody from, that doesn't know you.
Sure, I'm the, um, Chamber Secretary here at the Arcadia Chamber of Commerce, and so, yeah, this item should have been brought to the council way earlier. So basically what it is, it's, it's just a, um, get together in collaboration with the school district, a business after five, that we've done at various locations. And basically just a networking opportunity with food, um, and beverages, and we wanted to do it up at the visitors' center because a lot of people don't know where our chamber office is. And so that was one reason why we wanted to hold it up there.
So, by the letter of the law, they should file a picnic permit, which they did, um, just so you know, this, you're not that late, we've had to have a special meeting for somebody that was gonna have a, wasn't, was it the Fireman's Dance? On Saturday, I think we had the meeting on Wednesday or Thursday, so. You're, you're, you're good. She texted or emailed me a couple of weeks ago, the day after the meeting, when we had a Monday meeting instead of Wednesday, wondering if she could get on the agenda because she was worried.
Yeah, but now I know.
You're just fine. You were just fine. Any other questions, comments, what it's in regards to? Can you make sure you send something to Angelo to distribute to the council? How many members do like to attend those?
Yes.
Different business people, and then we'll just list it as a possible-
They do know no alcohol on the walk.
Yeah.
Yep.
That they, they know and that's listed on there. You know that too, right?
Yes, but we are able to have it by the office.
Yes. It's, somebody feed that either side of a morning walk in this. Any other questions? Clerk will call the roll.
Anderson.
Yes.
Conrad.
Yes.
Feltus.
Yeah.
Mezek.
Yes.
Sensala.
Yeah.
Motion carries. Item A B, discussion of possible action on utility commission appointment.
So move.
Session by Feltus, second by Mezek, and have reached out to Gary Vouch, and Gary is willing to serve it on the five year term. It's thirty in October. Commerce questions? Clerk will call the roll.
Anderson.
Yes.
Feltus.
Yeah.
Mezek.
Yes.
Sensala.
Yeah.
Anderson.
Yes.
Motion carries. Just something to go off of that, about appointments, if you get contacted by anybody, please reach out to myself or Angelo, so we have a list. Sometimes I overlook people that may want to be appointed to different committees, at least to have an idea of where it could start with. Some people want to serve, other people, there's no way in heck they do, so it's nice to at least have a running list out there of who's willing to serve. Item A C, discussion of possible action on ordinance two thousand nineteen dash six, ordinance regulating dance halls in the city of Arcadia. Undertaken a motion to approve. Motion by Feltus, is there a second?
Second.
By Sensala. Questions?
What, was there one of these before?
There was.
Yeah.
This is almost, Angelo can, she worked with Terry, a little bit more on it.
When we recodified our ordinances, you know, maybe three years ago, you know, we went through all of our ordinances that seemed at the time to be outdated or, or not. Um, you know, we haven't had a dance hall in quite a long time, um, like our, some of our slaughterhouses and that kind of stuff. We had ordinances in effect on some of those things that we repealed because they didn't seem to be, um, current, I mean, we didn't deal with them, um, we've had some interest now in some dance halls in the city limits, and, uh, when we went back, we, we pulled up our, the ordinance that we had repealed, and that was our starting point for, um, creating an ordinance. We have some interest, you know, with some of these, um, buildings around town, um, and thought it might be in the best interest of the city of Arcadia to have a dance hall ordinance back.
So it's fifty dollars a year for the permit? They could have fifty-one dances if they want to do, for fifty bucks, is that what I'm reading?
That was my understanding.
That's good. I mean, I don't want to be overcharged, you know.
Fun. Yeah.
Annual dance hall license. No, and we don't want to overcharge people. Carl, you have a question?
Are you saying that right? Because if you look in here, the annual fee for the permit is fifteen dollars. Then if you look in here, in addition to the annual dance hall license fee, is a fifty dollar payment to the city clerk so that the, uh, property can be inspected by the fire chief or the chief of police. That has got nothing to do with purchasing the license or the permit. This is, am I reading that right?
What page are you on?
One and two to top.
Two, two. It's three, two.
So it's fifteen dollars for the permit?
Fifteen dollars, and right before that, there's a fifteen dollar annual fee for the, for the license.
Fifteen is crossed off though.
Okay, okay.
Well, no, but it's, but, because all of our fees now are being done by resolution of the common council.
Right.
So the common council would need to determine what the annual dance hall fee would be, um, but in addition to the annual dance hall fee, that fifty dollar fee would cover, um, the fire chief or the chief of police to inspect the facility.
Okay, but my question is, is that a one-time, or is that an annual fifty dollar additional?
A fifty dollar.
Annual, it says the annual right here.
So, in other words, every year, you have to pay fifty dollars for them to cover and inspect the properties.
Correct.
The way the ordinance is written.
But it has nothing to do with how many dances you have in there.
Well, I just wanted to be sure of that.
Yeah.
Right.
You're free to have that. I didn't think somebody should charge fifty dollars every dance, is what I was saying.
Oh, okay. So then.
And the reason that is, Carl, is once, I mean, the thought behind it is, if something changes and it's no longer fire safe, least safe, that if there's, uh,
Yeah, I, I-
any, any event that it happens, at least we have a, you, we can get into the property to make sure it's still safe for, for people that are going to be up for those events.
Okay.
I mean, we've had, luckily, we haven't had those type of issues, but if you look around the country where, if there's a fire or something like that, the fire department tours businesses.
We hire them, but-
But no, but you guys do tours of the larger businesses, so you kind of know what the layout is if there was a, and I would imagine would be one that Jeff may want to show and say, if there's something happens, this is one thing.
Yeah. And then I do have one other question. Two, two, the dance hall, and then you got a line through another dance hall, shall conform to the Wisconsin State Building Code for the compliance of capacity, fire suppression system, shall have clean, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, right on down the line. Now, if we've gone through all of this, and we did have the state inspector here, the state inspector turned around and says, you have an, you hire an architect, and whatever architect agrees to, he will agree to. But then on top of it, there was still some question as far as, and I think Jeff is the one that brought it up, uh, about a possible-
Jeff Horverson?
Yes, Jeff Horverson, I'm sorry.
Nope.
Uh, he had brought up about possible sprinkler system. So then we turned around and looked into a sprinkler system, and I do have a quotation, my phone is in a truck, I apologize, I do have a notation from Fire Line out of Whitehall, they do all of the sprinkler systems for Ashley all over God's recreation, and so I do have that also on file, if you wish to look at that.
But I think what, what, what the intent is, is that we're not going to regulate it beyond what the Wisconsin State Building Code say.
Okay.
So if you're, if you meet the Wisconsin State Building Code,
Yeah.
then you're fine.
Okay.
You know, as, as a city, we could-
You can override that.
We can override and have more strict policies, however, we wanted to stick with the Wisconsin State Building Code.
Okay.
That's the way I read it, and that's what was discussed. Okay, Terry.
Because it, it was in here, and that's why I asked it.
Yep.
And, and our problem is, our attorneys are your attorneys. And so, they could be right here and I couldn't ask them to diddly squat. And so, he says, if you've got a question, ask, and so that's what I'm doing.
And that's why it reads that, you know, shall conform to the Wisconsin State Building Code. But not including, you know, it's not just limited to that, everything on the Wisconsin State Building Code. Any other questions, Carol, did you have any other comments, questions?
No, the one thing here, now, it does say, uh, shall be discontinued for the night, and all it says is about drinking. But now, this should also be a no smoking premises also? Would that not be correct?
Yeah, but I, but I don't think we can make it because that's a state law.
It's a, it is a state law.
It's a state law, so we couldn't require sm-
No, I don't know that it's a state law unless it is.
It is.
It is. We, yeah, we can't, we can't say like, say, if you wanted to have smoking in there, we couldn't say it's legal. Because it's a state law.
Okay, well, he doesn't want smoking.
Oh.
Yeah, so, but, but I did not see it in here.
Yeah, I don't think they could, they can-
And so I, that's why I was kind of wondering if that was something that was just forgotten, or is that just kind of a, a hearsay, point blank, done deal? And so, because he's, I think he's even going to put up no smoking to make sure that nobody does smoke.
Right, and I, I don't think it's in there, being that it is state law, that it, it doesn't have to be written in.
Okay.
That would, that's my understanding.
Correct.
Yes.
Does this dance hall thing follow the timelines of, like a bar?
Correct.
That's not it very much.
Till one o'clock.
About times on that?
Yeah, till one.
Bar time's two thirty.
So it's not, not till, it's-
It's so you can get the people clear out by two thirty.
Well, that's, that's only if they have a license to sell it.
Well, you're gonna have a, looking for a license.
Wait, 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 no.
Item two B.
But can, can I just, um, we're not tailoring this license specifically for-
Yeah, this is all-
This is, this is citywide, because we have other locations in the city that are now interested in having dance halls on their premises. So it's not, we're not writing this ordinance specifically for-
For one applicant, or one person.
But he, but he did mention something here about a license, now, I was informed whether, well, no, there will be no beer, no alcohol of any nature sold there. But if he rents it out to you for a birthday party, you can bring beer in and/or wine. You cannot bring any hard liquor in. Now, we were informed that because of that, we would have to have, I shouldn't say we, Juan would have to, Juan would have to purchase a, another beer license for just that property.
If you're gonna sell it.
No, no, that is not, that is not. Just to have the beer in there, according to, according to Terry, you have to have a beer license.
Because it's public, unless it's closed to private.
Public or, I should say, like a private industry, that, then you have to have a license to even have somebody bring it in.
Yes. Oh, so you, so you have-
If you rent the pavilion-
That's a public, that's a city park, that's different, the pavilion is ran by the Lions Club, and they have a permit, a beer permit.
A beer permit.
Correct? Oh, oh, no, because it's a city park, it's a city building.
They get a picnic permit for their events, but there isn't a permit to cover every, if, if Sliver gets married.
But it's a public building, we're, we're talking different things between a public, public-
Public and private.
And a private, Leone, Jolene. So Chad, would that mean that they would have to, if, if they have a liquor license, they would have to procure their alcohol through one vendor, regardless of who's, who's bringing it in? I mean, so you couldn't, if you had a liquor license, you can't-
You can't just go down to the local, quick trip and buy alcohol to go sell.
But they're not selling it, this is a private party, so if you have a party at your house, you're gonna have peelers bring it to you?
My understanding, my understanding of the law, yes, if you have a private party, it's a dance hall, you're allowed to have the alcohol on premise and give it away, you can't sell it. How about if they bring their own beer?
They bring their own beer and wine, they cannot bring
Right.
Jabeve or Windsor or nothing like that.
Correct.
Right.
As, as a private, private party now, as soon as you open it to the public.
No, this is gonna be, these are strictly going to be private parties.
So it's not subject to a time, because it's just like, I'm gonna think at your house. Or is it different because they're renting a place?
The way Mr. Madden told me is that as long as they bring their own beer in, consuming it on that property, they would have to have a beer license, which encompasses beer and wine, am I correct?
No, beer and wine are separate.
They're two separate.
Two separate, okay, but no hard alcohol, and a hard alcohol, uh, there is no other ones available after this other one is gone. And he's not looking for that, and I'm specifically talking about this particular, uh, project here. But, which would pertain to anybody opening up whatever. And he doesn't mind, he doesn't mind having to procure, uh, uh, another beer license and/or wine license, um-
If there's one available, though.
Beer license?
There's not a quota.
Beer license, there is a quota, the only thing there's a quota is on the hard alcohol.
Liquor, there's-
Yeah, liquor. Yes. That's right.
I, I just, I'm, I guess back to what I was talking, is, is, at two thirty, does the party have to end, or can they just go all night?
No, they, they want it to end, and that's why it's written at one o'clock. Because we, I don't think anybody wants
No.
stuff to go all night.
No.
Not the neighbors, well, Fritz, maybe-
When I was eighteen, I-
Yeah, that was different, then you wanted it to go all night. I don't, I don't think the operator of any location, I mean, obviously they have help or whatever, they don't, they want to get people out.
When, when I talked to Diana, uh, uh, we had a nice lengthy discussion, and she would have liked to stayed with the bar regulations, and if there's somebody in there drinking after that, they better dump it out. But, they could be cleaning, they're not supposed to be consuming, so in other words, at two oh five, what time is bar time?
Two thirty.
At two thirty, um- At two thirty one, I better not be handing you another beer. Two thirty, they cannot have any more beer, period, but she would have liked to seen it, and I'm hoping I'm saying this correctly, she would have liked to seen it consumed and the people start to be leaving. And anybody in there after that effect should be cleaning, did, did I say that right, Ron?
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
So really, the, okay, going back to the, the main question, yes. Can a person rents the facility, right?
Yeah.
Hasn't this dance hall, they're renting it from them, can a person bring in beer? Doesn't have to be purchased through a
District.
District, is really the question. Right? I just want to make sure I understood the-
We forgot, I forgot the factor that they're renting, there's still a rental.
Right.
There's a transaction of funds going on.
But you're renting the pavilion.
But that's publicly owned building versus a privately owned business, like.
So the law's different, even like, even in the parks are different, because they're public.
So, I have a question on that.
I, I think is-
Just wait one second, Chad.
If somebody rent the place, and they want to buy beer for peelers, can they buy beer for peelers? I think they had to have a business, uh, application or something, right?
That, that's kind of where I was thinking about that, you know, they're not gonna want to have, say you have fifty-one dances, they're gonna have fifty-one different applicants for each peelers or across beverage or wherever, or can you just bring it on site, bring your own beer or wine on site? I just want to make sure we do it the right way.
Yes.
And I think that's what everybody wants.
In my mind, if they're not selling the beer, they can get it from wherever they- What difference would it make where it comes from?
I, I know, but that's governed by the state.
It is.
But it has to.
You know, because the, because even wine, because wine now, they're trying to push, or we're trying to push to have a, go through a distributor. Wine is not currently through a distributor, if I'm correct, because I think that's got held up at the state level.
Okay, but I think you're missing something here, beer and wine is being bought through a store, they're already paying the taxes and everything else.
Oh, I under, I understand that, however, just as like any, any, I'll like call it an event center, do they have to buy it from a distributor?
Yeah, I'm just trying to remember in the code, if, if, once you issue a Class A license, if the code strictly says that you must then purchase it through a licensed distributor.
Which, which the owner of the building would have to purchase it, could resell it at no-
And then resell it.
Could resell it at no profit to the person who rents it. But that would be up to the, to the person.
Hate to say that, I'd like a clarification on that from Terry.
You know what we're saying, Carl, right?
I know what you're saying, we-
But the right person to call is the Department of Revenue, we have a good contact with the Department of Revenue, we can call.
For the way you guys are talking, and, and the way Terry and I have talked several times, all he says is, well, we gotta have is a beer permit or license, so that they can bring the beer in there. As long as it is not being sold, period, that was the big, a big mark, sold. Juan cannot go over there and sell beer, they can go over to his grocery store and buy beer and take it over there.
Well, the reason I, I bring this up, and just to play devil's advocate, because I think we should table it and bring this up at the next meeting, just to make sure we have the clarification, but, say I wanted to go to the pizza restaurant,
Yeah.
and they have a beer and wine license, I believe.
They did, they did.
They did, but they used to, but say I went to Juan's store, picked up a six pack, could I take it in there and drink it legally? And didn't buy it from them? That's the question.
So to get past this sticking point, would, would it be that
Or if I went to-
they have to purchase it from him?
Correct.
Better for him, he's gonna work out on both ends. Not if he's gonna sell it at no profit.
That's up to him, if he sells it at no profit.
But isn't that what you said earlier?
I said it would be up to the
Yeah.
the owner of the space.
Okay.
It'd be no different than the owner of the country club.
Okay.
You know, they could sell the beer back at nothing, at exactly what they bought it at, however, they're gonna want to make something off the beer.
Okay. I don't think he'd have a problem with that.
But I, yeah, I think that's a win-win for him, because he's gonna rent a hall and sell him all the beers.
But we also want to make sure that if, if people are buying it at Woodman's, because they can get a better price or something like that, and they're bringing it in, and he has a license-
Using his license.
Using his license, could that person get in trouble from the Department of Revenue?
I would think yes.
That's, right.
I would think. So, yeah, that's what I'm thinking, we'll make it so that he, they can only buy it from you to take over there, so you win both ways.
I mean, I just want to make sure, so we can, I think we know the questions, anybody got more questions?
But how about?
No, we, because I think, well, well, because we go to Terry, we want to make sure all the questions are answered.
We're governing, there's no beer sales after midnight either, in a store, correct?
No.
Nope.
Right, only to ten o'clock, in my store.
But I think it's midnight at.
It's midnight.
Midnight. But your store, I know it's ten.
Yeah, I close up then.
They better have enough by then.
Hear that, I heard you had to speak that one.
So what was your question?
Like, if the dance goes till-
Right, but that's-
The dance can only go till one.
Right? But if the, if the beer runs low at ten, twenty, and that store ain't open, then, I mean, I, and I don't really care where they get the beer from, but to make this right, they can't go to Express, Murder, Quick Trip and bring other beer in there.
But Juan could make an exception, as long as it's before midnight, is that not correct?
He could go over there and sell it.
Yes.
Yeah, but I think with his, with a, with a beer license, you can, he could, you can sell it till-
Till midnight, is it not? Yeah, I think it's midnight, because off sale, that was what we're talking, right?
Um, most, most of the times, the beer, the people buy the beer ahead of time, and I think it's better buy ahead of time, if it's done, it's done.
When you're out.
Well, I like your opinion, Juan.
Yeah.
You know, so. Because I, because it's usually at two in the morning when they think that they need, people need more.
Right.
Yeah, and that's when the problems start.
Yep.
So, my idea is done like, uh, one, two in the morning.
Right.
Every day.
But.
I guess, would it, would it fall under Class A or Class B license?
Right. Because a Class B, you only serve till midnight. So you know, because the liquor license, a bar is governed by three different licenses, right? Or they have a combination.
They have a combination. On and off sale.
On and off.
But if you have an on sale, not just off sale, that's what a dance hall would have, they could serve till one o'clock.
But only serve?
Right. Okay. Is there any other questions? So I think we got more questions that we can go back to Terry with, just to get clarification, and if he needs to be here at the next meeting.
If you're okay with it, can Chad and I call the Department of Revenue?
Yeah, yes, of course.
They know the, the license statute, and then we can kind of run it past Terry and bring it back to you guys.
I think we all have kind of the same, making sure we're all on the same page and I know-
And maybe we'll find there's a license that would more suit certain situations.
All right, well, there is a motion and a second, is there a motion to, uh,
Table it.
table it to the next meeting. Feltus, second by Anderson, clerk will call the roll.
Feltus.
Yes.
Mezek.
Yes.
Sensala. Anderson.
Yes.
Conrad.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Excuse me, could I ask one more question?
Sure.
He would like to start remodeling.
Well, I don't think the remodeling has anything to do with, uh, with the, uh, the dance hall thing.
Because we, we know what's gotta be done, and I don't know if I gave you a copy of the blueprints?
You did, um, did you get an answer from the state inspector on capacity?
Everything is taken care of, we're ready to go.
Carl, I won't answer it, just because anything can change, and opinions can change.
Yeah.
However, the discussion and the questions were really in regards to the beer and the timing and who had to buy it, and where it could be bought from, I think is the main discussion point.
Not the dance hall.
Not, not the dance hall or the construction of it, as far as the, um, the ordinance, so. Like I said, things can change, so I don't want to just say, yeah, but, that was, that's my opinion of- Like I said, things can change, I don't wanna just say, yeah, you could, but that was, that's my opinion of, of the gist I got out of it, just to make sure we're all on the same page. Make sense? You can read between the blurry line there, Carl?
I got my glasses on there, yeah.
Item nine A, approval of, uh, the Arcadia School District pay request number eleven for the library, an amount of thirty-nine thousand four hundred and five dollars and twenty-four cents. Motion to approve. What is HSR and Associates, the architect? O double cross. And who hired Golden Studios? I'd, I'd have to ask the school district.
Maybe I can share something, I think Golden Studios, right, Ben Golden, I think there's, um, it's not confirmed, but I think there'll be some artwork in it.
He's doing the mural.
Right, so it's a, that it pertains to.
Well, it's a contract with the school district, the whole project is with the school district, so they must have hired him.
Well, our share of that is five hundred and ninety-six dollars.
We just paid one like that, couple meetings ago.
The one we, the one on, for the library?
No.
No, the one we paid for Golden Studios was for the, um.
Marble.
The monument in the park, and then that was given back through the Hackley donation, through the, um, Gold Star Mothers. That was the other one, Fritz. Any other questions, otherwise I entertain a motion to approve.
Second by Feltus, second by Mesa. Clerk will call the roll.
Anderson?
Yes.
Conrad?
Yes.
Feltus?
Yeah.
Mesa?
Yes.
Sensala?
Yep.
Motion carries. Going back onto that, if anybody wants a tour of the library or the phone center, you know where to get in contact group, it's open at any time, just standing in by, just so you know. Right?
That come from Jason?
No, I'm just reminding you guys. It's up to you guys.
I wasn't seeing George.
Item nine B, approval of bills of general comp to the amount of a hundred and fifty-two thousand four hundred and twenty-four dollars and ninety-nine cents.
Oh.
Motion by Sensala, is there a second?
Sir.
By Anderson, questions?
Reimbursement for food for the police at Ashley for the arts?
Yeah, that's getting billed back to Ashley for the arts.
I mean, that's almost seven hundred dollars.
It's getting billed back to Ashley for the arts. Previous years, Ashley for the arts, um, had a specific spot, I think, on the west side of the grounds, I'll say, for their event staff that they held food. This year they didn't do that, they were gonna move it somewhere else, so Diana went and bought food and then they're gonna be reimbursed back, cause a lot of those people either don't get to eat or, um, the lines are a little long.
Triple economy, seventy-two dollar maps for Ashley for the arts?
That should be getting billed back there as well.
And what about the fifteen earpieces, two-way radios for PD, a hundred and fifty-three ninety-three?
That should be getting all billed back to them as well, it's all part of that, um, our, uh, special events agreement that we signed.
Okay, what about fixing the park up then, where all the ruts are and?
As well, um, we had a discussion with Cole Ballack and Gary Bouch and it's all part of the agreement that the park has to be brought back because of the way it was given to them. We would expect that of anybody that utilizes the park, or any park for that matter, not just memorial park. I think we know that through bathrooms or, um, garbage being left around, um, that has been a heck of a job of tracking down the people in rented to make sure they come back and clean it. Sometimes, not so easy. Any other questions? Clerk will call the roll.
Conrad?
Yes.
Feltus?
Yeah.
Mesa?
Yes.
Sensala?
Yep.
Anderson?
Yep.
Motion carries. Item ten A, operator licenses. Five or six of them on there.
So move, background check, second.
Motion by Feltus, second by Mesa, questions? Clerk will call the roll.
I don't know any.
Either.
Feltus?
Yes.
Mesa?
Yes.
Sensala?
Yep.
Anderson?
Yep.
Conrad?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item ten B, possible action on the reserved class B liquor license application for Santa Fe Restaurant LLC.
So move, second.
Motion by Feltus, second by Mesa, questions? You know what this is for? Got the guy sitting right over there in the corner, just.
Is it for the answer?
I always call, no, 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 this is for the restaurant.
Yeah, this is for the.
This is for the Santa Fe Restaurant.
For you, Carl, denied. For Juan, not a problem.
I've never called a Juan before, I was calling Mateos.
My nickname.
No, this is strictly for the restaurant to, cause once.
You always say have margaritas.
Yes.
Basically, yeah.
This is what my customers ask me a lot, for margaritas. And, uh, that kinda stuff, you know?
You gotta sell a lot of margaritas.
Well, we need to have what customer asks for.
Right, that's true.
Questions, comments? Good food?
Thank you.
Clerk will call the roll. Especially that call up.
Mesa?
Yes.
Sensala?
Yeah.
Anderson?
Yes.
Conrad?
Yes.
Feltus?
Yep.
Motion carries. Item ten C, possible action on temporary class B picnic permit for the Holy Family Center, September seventh through the eighth, see now, this one's close with us this weekend. Carl must've been dragging his feet on this.
No, I ain't got nothing on, pretty soon I'm gonna be Joe Blow up there, period.
Who, did somebody make a motion?
I did.
Sensala, is there a second? By Anderson. That looked bad, have that die on the floor, right? Questions, your comments, what this is in regards to? Clerk will call the roll.
Sensala?
Yep.
Anderson?
Yes.
Conrad?
Yes.
Feltus?
Yep.
Mesa?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item ten D, possible action on temporary class B picnic permit for a beer wine walk sponsored by the Arcadia Chamber of Commerce on the twenty-fourth of October.
Where's that at?
Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
By Sensala, is there a second? By Mesa.
So basically, other towns have been doing that, similar things, uh, I think for years, or at least some towns like nine years, so usually it's a beer or wine walk. And it was one thing that came to mind, um, after I was at TVN Appliance, I did a little cooking, um, demonstration, and I thought that went kind of, well, it was a small group, but it went well. So I was thinking, you know, possibly we could do something with a beer and wine walk combined, because I didn't know, it was kind of, um, late in the year, um, to plan something like this, so beer and wine to kinda get a chance to get wineries and breweries, breweries in, in, I didn't know, um, yeah, how it would go, and so we have basically, it would be on Main Street, lots of towns do it on Main Street. Um, we have like seven businesses, including Santa Fe Restaurant, um, uh, the shoe store, Tricor, the Pizza Factory, various businesses all on Main Street that would basically serve as a host for a brewery or winery, hopefully kinda half-half, and people would buy, um, as a starting point, we were thinking the parking lot out here, people would buy tickets in advance. They get their IDs checked here by the parking lot, um, by the train tracks and get a, everspan, and they basically, um, can go to various business locations. We would have signage, which ones would participate, and what it really is, it'd be a representative, representative from a brewery or winery doing samples, so like one to two ounces. And people just are encouraged to visit various businesses.
But, um, in talking with the Department of Revenue, you have to charge a fee for the event, and when you say tickets, you get a ticket for the event or a wristband for the event, but you can't charge per location or per, so if I have five, so that's a good, for all I has ten, it, it, it's just gonna be to go on the one.
Yeah, yeah, so they, they pay like twenty dollars, we were thinking, uh, in advance, and then we have to buy the alcohol from a licensed distributor. So unless, so that is part of that, um, the permit.
This is all gonna happen on the street?
Inside the buildings, inside the stores.
Okay.
So at the shoe store, it'll, the tasting will be inside the, the shoe store and there'll be no drinking on the streets.
So we have an open container lot, that's only relaxed during brother days?
Golf tournament?
Huh?
In the golf tournament.
Yeah, in the golf tournament.
That, that was why I asked the question.
Barb has worked with Diana in regards to it about, you know, park, you know, setting up both might be the best, she is aware of those type of things as well.
Sure, we, we talked about an officer, is there an extra officer needed, but for this, it really shouldn't be at, it'd be between four and eight o'clock, maybe it's even four to six, depending on, we only have a few stores, so it might really just take a couple hours for people to wander to the different locations and.
Barb, Barb's been very proactive to try to get, um, different events, and I mean that a good way into the city as well as to drive from business into down to Arcadia that we know needs it, um, and I, I think this is a, a great opportunity, I mean, you've done really good with the music festival and the art stuff in the park. I think they were both in good turnouts and I've, I've heard good things.
So then if they really like what they tasted, they can't purchase there, or can they?
They can, yeah, they could then go to a bar and purchase it if it's available, but they couldn't purchase it right there.
Right.
From what I understand, but yeah, if it's like, um, like Mateo's or Uncle Sam's is one of the bars, it's the only bar we were gonna work with, and so if they had it there at the bar, they could purchase it, but they couldn't just stand there and, you know, keep drinking the samples and, or buy bottles from.
Right.
From the winery or brewery.
Right, right, yeah.
A winery might be able to, because they don't have to have a distributor, but. It gives you more hopes, but I, I think it's a good, I think it's a good thing, and it also brings, um, other businesses, whether it's wineries or breweries into the city, wondering if, you know, maybe they wanna open a little shop or something like that, and that also gives them customers that may come to their spots as well, so, kind of works both ways. Angela, are you gonna ask something?
I just wondered, um, you know, the, would this be a special event license application as well? I mean, the music in the park did, I mean, not that that would be a deal breaker, but, you know, we're just kinda getting going with the special events?
I'd have to think about that.
Okay.
I don't believe so, but I would, I would wanna read it again.
Would it have to, anything to do with stores being open longer, like, does that matter if they're open two hours longer than?
It's on, it's not, um, a license, someone sells alcohol past midnight, we don't regulate hours of business.
I, I can, I can run it, I'll run it by Diana, but I don't think so. What are you thinking, Carl?
Nevermind, come on, you.
You're turning a little red.
Clerk will call the roll.
Anderson?
Yes.
Conrad?
Yes.
Feltus?
Yeah.
Mesa?
Yes.
Sensala?
Yep.
Motion carries. This time I close the, uh, public hearing for the liquor license, I entertain a motion to approve.
So move, second.
By Feltus, second by Mesa, clerk will call the roll. Could you also note that there is no public comment during that?
Conrad?
Yes.
Feltus?
Yep.
Mesa?
Yes.
Sensala?
Yep.
Anderson?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next meeting Wednesday, September eighteenth at six thirty, I entertain a motion to approve.
So move, second.
Or, sorry, by Feltus, second by Mesa, clerk will call the roll.
Conrad?
Yes.
Feltus?
Yeah.
Mesa?
Yes.
Sensala?
Yep.
Anderson?
Yes.